Good morning, right? Yes, good morning, and welcome to the December 10th, 2015 study session. Looks like Mr. Richens is not here, but I believe he is, right? Dave, are you present via the telephone?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Not yet?
Yes, I'm here.
I know that it was our plan for Mr. Richens to join us telephonically.
Hello, I'm on. Can you hear me?
I wonder, does anybody know if we ought to call him or wait for him to do that? I think he wanted to participate in the meeting. Okay. Well, we will wait and hope that Mr. Richens joins us shortly. But in the meantime, the item on our agenda is, number one, to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the acquisition of property. Okay. That probably means he's not on the line, right? I think he's calling back, right? Oh, okay. So, Mr. Richens can hear us, and we're working on making it so that we can hear him, correct? Okay. Well, given that we've already convened, I do know that he wanted to participate in this meeting, so I hesitate to exclude him if the technology isn't there. Mr. Richens, are you available yet?
Yeah, I could hear you, but you couldn't hear me.
Okay. Well, we can hear you now, so it's good to have you with us.
Thank you.
The first item on the agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the acquisition of property located at 1240 East Main Street, previously and also known as the Mervin's site. Mr. Brady, is there any, is there a staff presentation on this? I know we're all very familiar with this topic, and...
We were planning on having a specific presentation if there's some questions. We have some information just more on the specifics of the building and the economics of the building, so if there's some specific questions, we can talk about that.
Okay.
I know a few of us had a chance to go to it recently and look at it, and so I know there's some questions about how it would be used, and so there's some thoughts there also.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding this agenda item?
I have a question. Maybe I could start?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Richens.
I just wanted to understand the square footage of this building compared to buildings found on the Southwest Ambulance site that was recently voted to be acquired. As I recall, there's a large industrial-style building on that campus as well as additional square footage, so maybe they could tell us how many square feet total on that Southwest Ambulance campus, which we, I think, approved for several, what, $25 million purchase or something? And then how the Mervin's building fits into that as far as city plans in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. My recollection it was a $13 million purchase, but...
That's correct.
Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. A couple of things. The Southwest Ambulance site is a $13 million purchase. It's 14.53 acres, and it's a total of 120,000 square feet in four buildings. At the north end of the site, there is a warehouse building that we're looking at converting to the dispatch center, and there is also a fleet, well, a fleet building as well. And those buildings, as I recall, were around 40,000 or 50,000 square feet each.
Fifty-plus.
Fifty-plus, yeah. And then the Mervin's site is actually on 7.93 acres, just under eight acres, and it's 90,092 square feet in the single building.
As I recall, there were four buildings on the Southwest Ambulance site. Isn't there a large industrial building on the northwest corner of that site?
It's actually, on the northwest corner of the site, it's more like a fleet building, if I recall. And it's fleet maintenance. So, it's set up to do fleet maintenance. It's got the carbon monoxide system for extraction of the vehicle exhausts and things like that. It's very specific use. The building we're looking at using for dispatch was a warehouse. That's the one on the northeast corner. And the northwest corner is the fleet building. The other two are...
So, four buildings, total square footage is what?
120,000 square feet, roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions regarding this item? Yes, Mr. Finter.
So, apologies, I was at my son's birthday party, family dinner, and I missed all the fun, it sounds like. So, I'm glad to be here and kind of weigh in today. I asked for the opportunity to go out and tour the Mervin's building and had a chance to look. I was actually, went in pretty skeptical, and I came out a little bit more impressed. Yes, a massive amount of square footage. A lot of the structure, a lot of the bones, as someone referred to it, as far as burglar, fire alarms, state-of-the-art fire systems, air conditioning units that had been replaced not that long ago, roof that's been redone. And so, when I looked at it, my eyes had looked at it as a kind of a potential for a warehouse. And I'm not trying to change anybody's mind as I give you a little bit of where I'm coming from. I'm just kind of looking at it, trying to let you know, you know, the filter that I'm putting it through. And so, I look, and I say, okay, we have these, in this community, we have these massive big-box buildings that are sitting vacant all over the city. District 2 has hit hard, the West Side's hit hard. And what are we going to do as a community? Maybe it's the private sector that eventually steps up and does some changes. This became available because we were looking at it as one of the potential sites for regional dispatch and emergency operations center. And so, now that we've made another choice and gone a different direction, we have this sitting here. And so, for Alex, myself, looking at this and saying, okay, is there an opportunity here? My personal opinion is, you know, something to just buy and hold, and then, you know, it is on the light rail station, a proposed or future light rail station. I'm less likely to want to go that route of maybe a real estate speculation. But then, when I look at this building, realize it has some iconic status in the community. It has definitely been an eyesore and a challenge, you know, for the neighborhood. I used to represent this area until there was some redistricting. Is there an opportunity to get it at almost fire sale prices? These numbers on the square footage and things are crazy low in my mind. So, is there an opportunity to get this site and be able to do two things? We always try and get a two-for or a three-for. And is the opportunity to get warehouse space? I think we're overbuilt in big-box retail space. Can we look at this site as possibly a portion of it, a warehouse type of use or some other type of use? And then, the front portion of the property that's on Main next to the light rail station, which is quite a bit of acreage there, or a few acres there for future development for the light rail. And to me, I'm hoping, and I was hoping to hear from city staff, some sort of plan that would make sense to me to be able to say, hey, I vote for the idea of acquiring this property. We'll get some use out of a big box and make it a better situation for that neighborhood, but still leaves all the opportunities for the future to, for when that future development comes at the light rail site. So, someone tell me how we do that.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Finter. So, a couple of things. The location of the, and the council member and I both had a chance to walk through the building, and I think what was interesting is to know that there's been a tremendous amount of recent investment in the property with the HVAC systems, and it's actually in pretty good condition. So, when I would imagine that, as I saw the open space and started thinking about our needs, and I appreciate the council with its abundance of blessings of space now, where before, we've kind of struggled with this, and it really kind of started opening my thoughts to about, well, what are our real needs are. You know, just this week, we had to tell the Shakespeare Group that they could no longer store their props and costumes in our city warehouses. We have existing warehouses that need to be overhauled or abandoned because of their age. The other thing, this is located along the light rail. We know for at least a period of time, this will be an ideal place that we could, Metro will be looking to lease space out along that portion of light rail. So, that obviously won't need the entire 90,000 square feet, but they would certainly be able to fit within this location. We've always talked about, and I think I'm becoming more aware of, the need to have, you know, a public safety presence along light rail, having a place for the bike patrol or other patrol that are going to be required, necessary to go up and down the light rail and next to a station. I think that could be an opportunity for us to look at how we could place maybe a component of our patrol group out there. We are, we rent space out in different locations for storage of furniture and equipment, so certainly that savings would be ideal for us. And then, just, we know we have tremendous amount of need for evidence storage, a lot of it which we're now having to do outside. I think what impressed me, and we were kind of talking about, there's a lot of these roll-up doors at this location, and the height of the ceilings kind of left me with the impression, whether it's a short-term or a long-term use, being able to put our storage, our big bulky stuff that the police department collects for evidence storage, in this location would be interesting, would be as a warehouse, would be ideal as opposed to a lot of that has to happen outside. So, again, it's a, there's, in this operation of things we do, I'm sure that, I know just based on those few examples over the few hours I had to think about it, there are certainly opportunities for us to use that. And being next to light rail, and Counselor, you said something yesterday, too, that I think we should give a hard look at, is how do we turn this into community space also and benefiting the neighborhoods and those that are around there? You talked about some examples in other communities. I don't know if it goes quite to that degree, but maybe there are some things in that community, in that neighborhood, that probably could, we could extend some services out in that area. So, those are just some thoughts.
Thank you. I appreciate that. There is, I didn't have a chance to bring it here, running late, but there's a study on my desk that the city commissioned through the police department that said this community is going to need for their police department approximately 45,000 square feet in the future, probably within three to five years, to be able to do evidence storage. And so, I remember when I had the opportunity, talking with the then-police chief, he came in, and some of the numbers that were thrown around, $11 million to build a facility somewhere to do that. And so, I try to honestly look and see if there's an opportunity to get a massive amount of warehouse space, whatever the professional staff eventually decides to own and present to the council. We can, I think there's an opportunity to save a small fortune down the road, even if it's in an interim basis, to be able to alleviate some of the concerns and needs. So, I'm supportive of going through, going forward and doing this effort. I'm very cautious about it. I feel like that there's enough of a theme and a way to do this, that it's a smart investment. Just so folks know, we used a straw buyer when we went out and approached these individuals on some of these last purchases. And so, I feel like the citizens are getting a great buy. It's helping the community. It's meeting some needs that have been described by the city manager. For me, I'm okay doing this, so I'd be supportive of going that route.
I've asked staff and Mr. Brian Holt, the broker, some questions about this property that's led me to the conclusion that it is a good, a great building. It's at a great location. It's got great interim uses that we've talked about already. The building is in good condition and has a useful life for many years to come. That with the fact of its very strategic location at a future light rail station, to me means, I mean, just for the interim use, I think it's worth it. But for the long-term benefit, I think decades from now, the city will look back on this as a wise decision, because what ultimately comes into that property after the useful life of this building has occurred, is going to be a permanent improvement for that neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood, but let's be honest, it's a challenged neighborhood. And as light rail proceeds further on East Main, the weaknesses of that neighborhood are going to be more and more exposed. I think this is a great opportunity for us to have an opportunity to, that, I got to tell you, as mayor, I hear from a lot of people that want to be involved in transit-oriented development along the light rail road. And unfortunately, we don't have an inventory of property that we can strategically refer them to. So, ultimately, at build-out, I think this will provide us with a great opportunity for a special use to come in once the interim use has occurred. Also, I think it's very attractive from just a financial point of view. Remind me, the purchase price here is at 2.7?
2.7.
2.7. What we're tying, and the comps that, and Mr. Brian Holt, correct me if I'm wrong, because I think I got these from you, but the land value, I believe, for the 7.9, let's just call it eight acres alone, if this was raw land, it would be between 2 and 2.4 million dollars, is my understanding. As a conservative estimate. And the building that is there, if we were to try, the construction cost of a similar building would be between 5 to 7 and 1/2 million dollars. And again, the purchase price is 2.7. The current seller purchased this property just seven years ago for 11 and 1/2 million dollars. So, I think going through the straw buyer process has allowed us to stumble into a very good deal. And the strategic location of it, along with the very practical and valuable nature of it for our uses, to me, makes us a very easy decision. So, I appreciate the work that's gone into bringing this to our attention. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. One of the best things I've learned over the last eight years is that, in looking at situations like this, the city needs to follow what I call the Finter Protocol, which is to, again, not come to a property owner and say, hi, we're the city, we're ready to buy your property. And, you know, the dollar signs ring up. And I think it's a very, it's a sage approach that has benefited the community when there are opportunities to acquire property that we either have immediate needs for or long-term needs for. And, yeah, we do own a lot of property in downtown that we would like to see developed. Unfortunately, not a lot of it is actually on the light rail line. And those of us who studied transit-oriented development and mass transit around the valley and around the country know that property that is adjacent to a light rail stop will ultimately get beneficial development that will, one, benefit the neighborhood and the community and mass transit, as well as, again, if the city owns it and then wheels it back into the private sector, I think you get a good return on investment. As you said, you know, the bones of the building are good. This is one of the situations where big-box retail can be adaptively reused for multiple purposes that can meet the community needs for, you know, the short-term and until there's other beneficial uses on the site. As I was talking with Councilmember Finter earlier, again, this could be, again, another example as a home for our police volunteers. We don't have a home for police volunteers. We do for fire, and that's worked very well in terms of staging their activities and events. And I think having a public safety presence on the site could be very beneficial. As we heard earlier, we have a lot of evidence storage places that are outside, so you can, subject to elements, maybe subject to other risks, that we may reduce or minimize in having indoor protective facility. And I think it gives a lot of versatility in that regard. And I mean, I truly think the property of this size, the location, certainly in the future, it's going to transition to other higher uses. But for current needs, I think it's, it's an investment that is a wise one, so I would support moving ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. Mr. Glover.
I am personally, this is my district, and so I understand the needs of having the best and highest use of that property. However, I don't think that the city should be competing with the market. When we know that there are other buyers that are currently out there, that's what the market does, it's the invisible hand, and it moves it forward. What I find an interesting question is, do we have the money to finish the fire dispatch center? And the answer is currently no. We have the funds to actually purchase the building, but to move forward to do anything, we do not. And if not, why are we using $3 million to acquire a property that, yes, could theoretically be good use and an interim thing, but we have no plan in place, no strategic plan for a long-term use? And I feel that we're just land speculating in this situation. And I would rather not purchase the building, but that's just my feelings.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Mr. Thompson.
I agree with my colleague, Councilmember Glover. You know, as a city, we shouldn't be competing with the market. You know, it wasn't too long ago, just a few months ago, we were actually asking various departments throughout the city to cut their spending and to pull back on their budget. And now, we're setting a great example by going out and leveraging money that we don't have to purchase a piece of land that we won't keep for more than three to five years, move stuff into it, and in three to five years, move stuff out of it, only to go buy and purchase something else if the market returns us with more than what we put into it. I think it's a risk that we're taking with the taxpayer dollar. Me personally, I'm not comfortable doing that, and for me, I will not support this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Luna.
I'm going to be supporting this proposal. And what I heard today was, because of a strategic location, you know, I also believe it's good for the neighborhood in terms of the light rail and future development. I think it's a key asset to try to retain and to try to hold. And then, finally, that, you know, we will control its fate. So, as a city, I think it's a good move, and I'm going to be in support of the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Any other comments? I'm sorry, Mr. Brady.
I have a question for Chris.
Yes, go ahead. Dave, go ahead.
Chris, I know we didn't budget for this purchase in our budgeting process last fall, so I'm curious as to where the money's coming from the purchase and what we have to sacrifice in order to shift the money from whatever we budgeted for this purchase.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilman Richens. So, we did, obviously, this wasn't on anybody's spreadsheet recently. And so, one of the only, the opportunity that I can see right now, how we would finance this purchase, is that with the funds that we sold Pinal County lands with, we've held them, set them aside to pay over time the debt service on the Cub Stadium. Now, we received a large amount in the first takedown of that sale, so we haven't needed all immediately, because we spread the debt service out over 15, 20 years. So, there is funds available in the short term, three to five years today, which will at some point will need to make the debt service payment from that lump sum. So, it gives us the ability to make the purchase now, and then the choice is, over time, do we replenish those dollars through the budget process? Or, as maybe suggested, if the council were to do that, you could sell off portions of the property and then try to restore back the 2.7. By doing this, we are putting our, we are making a decision to, borrow's not the right word, because I don't want to make you think we're paying the interest, but we're taking money from a fund that we're set aside to help pay down that debt as that debt service comes. We can do that because we had such a large lump sum proceeds, and so we're using this over time. So, we can do it, but it's got a fuse on it, and so we either have to be ready to repay the entire amount in about three to five years, or we can build, we can each year set aside certain dollars to pay it back. So, that's, that would be my proposal from what I know today, and working, and just having some preliminary conversations with the Budget Office about how would we do this today? So, that would be the plan.
Do you feel, do you feel comfortable with that budgetary scenario? What's the risk to the city for that? So, it sounds to me like we're borrowing against another debt payment in order to make this purchase, and there's got to be some kind of risk associated with that. Are you comfortable level?
Sure. Yeah, no, you're right. And the risk is this, that if we don't have, if we don't replenish the 2.7, restore it when that, those final debt payments are due, then we have to make cuts then, or we have to go, yeah, we have to make cuts then, or we have to sell off property to restore back those dollars. The debt service is set, there's not flexibility in there. So, that's, that's my risk, and my nervousness is making, knowing that that payment is going to be due, make a decision today to use those funds that are needed for a future payment is always, you know, as we get closer to that point, when, how do we replenish those dollars? So, that's the risk. If we don't do it, then there has to be subsequent, or it has to be some type of reduction of something to make up for those dollars in the future. So, that'd be a future conversation with council. Do we set aside dollars each year to meet those obligations? Or would we have to make, sell off the front part of the property to restore back that portion? So, there'll be options to look at, and I just haven't had a chance to spend a lot more time. So, there is that risk, that if we don't replenish it in about three to five years, we would have to make up the reduction somewhere in the budget.
So, if the economy is in bad shape and we can't sell land, what are the options? Either raising property taxes or reducing the budget?
Well, we can't raise the property tax without a specific bond, so it would most likely for us, we're limited in ability to raise taxes, so it would have to be reductions in services or some type of activity in the city for, of 2.7 million dollars.
I think this serves as a good warning for my colleagues, who are going to be on the council for the coming years, who have to live with this decision, that, you know, robbing Peter to pay Paul and this kind of speculative land, you know, has seldom worked out positively for the city. Maybe it will, I don't know, but I see the legacy of Site 17, I see the legacy of Country Club in Maine and some of the other real estate speculation that the city's entered in. And it makes me feel really uncomfortable with this transaction, why I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Richens. I think if the economy goes bad, this will be the least of our problems, frankly, this 2.7 million dollar purchase. Site 17 and Country Club are great things to talk about right now, because I think that is, the specter of those is here. And so, Mr. Richens, I think that's, I agree with you that that is, that's an appropriate item to bring up. Let me tell you right now, Country Club in Maine, we've got, is out for RFPs right now. We've had hundreds.
Did we adjutize to discuss Country Club in Maine at this meeting in this context?
I'm happy not to. I thought you brought up the topic.
Oh, I just, reference to them, I didn't bring up a full-scale discussion about what's happening on those properties.
Okay. Fair enough. We probably agree with you.
So, maybe the answer is, future land sales could help pay, help offset the cost.
That's true. We do, thank you, Mr. Richens. Point well taken. I'll look forward to an agenda item in the future where I can talk about those two pieces of property. Mr. Finter.
Well, I was just going to add, the great thing that Councilmember Richens has done over the years is future land sales that we designate now because of the pursuit that he did into a fund, and then we use those. And I know we recently received back a large amount of money from the Brown &amp; Brown property and others. And so, I find a little bit of comfort knowing, since we are a massive landholder in many areas, of finding some resources, if in the worst-case scenario, we'd be able to do that. So, thank you to Mr. Richens for getting that where it's clearly defined. For decades, it was a concern, and now we know when we sell a piece of property, that's available, goes into a very identified fund, and we're able to draw on that later. So, just a perspective.
Thank you. Mr. Kavanaugh.
Again, just to follow up on Councilmember Finter's comments, I viewed the, what we did with the Pinal County Water Farm, as you recall, this is not robbing Peter to pay Paul, we created a revolving fund for economic development, and where we use it when the time is right to acquire property for things that we need, and we hope to, and then use it. We are able to take funds from the sale of those properties if we don't use them, push them back into the revolving fund for future economic development purposes. And I think this is one of those opportunities where we may be expending money from that fund, and we will have the opportunity, I believe, to replenish the money that we use for this particular deal. So, I don't think it's a robbing Peter to pay Paul. I think it's a wise use of a revolving fund that the council unanimously agreed to take several years ago.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I remind my colleagues quickly about, the nature was not a revolving fund, it was taking unproductive assets and putting them into productive assets. This is taking productive assets and putting it into an unproductive asset. So, it's a little different, I think, in this instance, but I do appreciate my colleagues' perspective on that fund, because I do agree that it was a brilliant idea.
It was his, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Thompson.
Mayor, I think we need also be careful with defining what is a want and what is a need. And I know that around the dice here, getting this piece of property is a want, and it's not a need. And for our citizens, I think they're, they deserve to know that what we are doing is in their best interest, and that we are providing them with a need. And the Southwest Ambulance site, if we have four buildings that have 50,000-plus square feet, there should probably be enough room there if we need for storage and some other things. I just really uncomfortable going out and buying another piece of property that we have no intention of really keeping long-term. I just don't think it's a proper use of our citizens' tax dollar.
Thank you. I'm tempted to say that we need to rehab that part of town, but... I'm tempted to say that we need to rehab that part of town, but I won't. Okay, thank you. Is there any other comments on this? If not, if you don't mind, gentlemen, I'm going to read a motion, because this is still, there's some, this is not a done deal, because there still is an environmental question that hasn't been resolved relative to this property. So moving forward, I think we all agree, it would be contingent on resolving any potential liabilities out there that would turn this from what appears to be, to some of us, a good deal into a questionable deal. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read the motion and then ask someone if they are so inclined to so move. So the question is, is there a motion to direct the city manager to acquire the property located at 1240 East Main Street? And provided further, that if the city manager determines that it is not in the best interests of the city to acquire the property, based on the Phase II environmental report, or for any other reasonable concern the city manager has about the acquisition, then in such event, the city manager may terminate the purchase agreement and not acquire the property. Would someone like to make that motion? Thank you. Mr. Luna, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Finter. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you, okay, I think we're all clear on what the vote was. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I know this was, we all, there were strong feelings on this, and I appreciate the way everyone worked together to express their points of view in a respectful way and for us to feel like we've had a good thorough vetting on this issue. The next item on the agenda is to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen that came to help us. If not, the next item on the agenda is scheduling meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Mayor, counsel, we'll see you January 7th will be our next studies, council study session.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh.
And I want to remind residents that they actually have until, I think, the 14th of this month to contribute toys to our toy drive for Carden Children's Hospital. I want to compliment Mesa Fire, Mesa Police, as well as SRP for providing very generous grants. I had the opportunity to go shopping with them yesterday at Target in the Fiesta District. And they were very generous in terms of the amount and number of toys that they purchased. That Target has been a wonderful partner. They suffered a lot through our streetscape, and it was nice to reinvest back into that center. But I think the efforts of the United Mesa Firefighters, Mesa Police Association, and SRP have helped to create a great base, for what I know the community will also add to. And they do have till next, till the 14th to contribute. So thank you.
Thank you. But, Mr. Kavanaugh, how many years have you been doing the toy drive at the hospital?
We started this when the hospital opened, so this is our seventh annual toy drive.
Well, this is a big deal, and the vice mayor really deserves kudos for the big role that he plays in making this be a big success every year, along with the public safety folks from the city of Mesa. So thank you for doing that. Mr. Luna.
I also wanted to invite the public that at Falcon Field, we're going to be dedicating the brand-new renovated terminal. It's a great renovation, some great art, and people flying into the airport will be very excited to see the beautiful terminal. So you're all welcome to come on Saturday, and we might just be flying in.
That's right, that's what I've heard. Yes. Gentlemen, any other announcements? Thank you. Next item is to adjourn, I would ask for a motion. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.